...Monday, March the 6th. Tonight on our agenda, we have a joint meeting with the Planning and Zoning Commission. I want to welcome those commissioners who are with us tonight. Thank you for being here. You guys do great work. I get to watch it every other Tuesday night with you, and it's, I'm always amazed at how well things go with those meetings, despite Mr. Zur as our, I'm just kidding. Well, tonight, for our joint meeting with the Planning and Zoning Commission, Mr. Zur has a joint training presentation to give us, and I think he's going to try and make it short in the event the weather gets here and causes us to take shelter. Hopefully, it won't, but we'll zoom right along. Mr. Zur.
Thank you, Mayor. It's a pleasure to be here. It's nice to be able to mix both of these groups together. My early years in Raymore, coming down for Planning and Zoning Commission feels like my, cutting my teeth time, and now the city council level, so it's nice to be able to mix both of these groups together. You all have materials in front of you. I'm going to go through them up on top as well. If you can't hear me, please let me know. If I need to slow down, let me know, but I've been under pretty strict instructions that, in addition to being educational this evening, we should try and aim for brevity and a degree of levity, so I will try and get all of those in in a single evening. I'll start with my levity at the very beginning of this. If you'll note, my item here for the first page is the City Council Planning Commission Joint Work Session, or, as I like to refer to it, Dr. Lon Font, or How I Learned to Stop Worrying and Love the Code. If you can give me the reference to that after the meeting, it's worth a dollar.
Dr. Strangelove.
Oh, man. Very good. So, moving on.
I believe you have to begin that with who is, or...
That's right. So, trying to keep it light while still educational, and part of what I'd like to do, a number of you all on the council also served at the Planning and Zoning Commission level, so some of this will be rerun for you, but it's important to kind of come back to it. During the course of Planning and Zoning Commission meetings and during city council meetings, I will regularly get questions about what we can or shouldn't, should consider or shouldn't consider. There are times when Chairman Faulkner will attempt to bring me in as the ninth chairman or the ninth member of the Planning and Zoning Commission as well, so maybe with this training opportunity, I can help decrease that option somewhat. Goals for the evening, and I will try and stay on these slides on relatively short basis, identify common planning applications. So, by myself and Mr. Catterett, we identified about four different applications that generally will work their way through from Planning and Zoning Commission to the city council level. Those will generally have city council hearings and Planning and Zoning Commission public hearings, so what we are trying to do is find topics that will work for both of you at the end of the day. Then I'm going to dive into the staff reports, and really what I want to do is focus on the staff reports in a, if I'm running late for a meeting and I need to be able to digest information, these are the five areas that I look at a staff report. Not to detract from Mr. Catterett, staff reports, which are excellent, fully comprehensive and understandable, but if you're looking for a bullets of what I would look for during the course of a meeting, I want to be able to dive into those for you and tell you why I look at those from the city attorney's perspective. The next I'm going to cover is the public hearing, and though it's not always required, I want you guys to understand when and where it has been required on each one of these things, and I'll make reference to the code sections for it. And finally, I want to include, as part of the public hearing portion, an overview of what the standard of review is going to be. So, if something comes out from the Planning and Zoning Commission and the city council, what is the standard going to be if that's challenged in a court of law? So, you guys can kind of understand, hey, is it an arbitrary and unreasonable, is it not supported by competent evidence level? And we'll talk about each one of those when we get down to that point. Finally, as part of my roadmap this evening, we'll have acceptable and unacceptable conditions. This would be unacceptable conditions. Well, you know, what would be an acceptable condition to impose upon a preliminary plat? What would be an acceptable condition to impose upon rezoning? Can we require rezoning, for example, and make the individual pay an extra $100,000 to install three streets on the opposite side of town? Generally, no, that's not an acceptable condition to impose. I'm going large with those examples for you. If you've got questions about potential conditions, both myself and Mr. Catterett are always there in order to provide answers for you. Common conditions that we'll talk about are going to be, for example, conditional use permits where you would have a time limit imposed. Hey, come back and see us in two years to make sure that everything is going well with this particular conditional use. Okay? So, that's the outline for the evening. My next area that I have comes from, a little bit from Mr. Catterett. So, these are the common planning applications that I'm going to cover for you this evening. They will include rezoning, conditional use permits, preliminary plat, and a final plat. These, again, are the ones that you will commonly see come forward, and I've got some statistics up there that Mr. Catterett was able to provide to me over the weekend. You'll see, back in 2004, in the heavy growth of Raymore, you'd have 15 rezonings and 11 preliminary plats and 26 final plats that came through, and conditional use permits of nine. We are, of course, very hopeful of seeing that kind of growth again in the near future, but giving you a sense as to what has come through in recent years. Moving on, a little bit of my brevity here for you. The staff report analyze, and I'm going to break each one of these down for you, and it's going to be, what do I focus on prior to a meeting? And really, it's going to boil down to just the facts. In fact, you're going to find me looking very closely at findings of fact and conclusions of law in Mr. Catterett's staff report throughout the evening. In addition to reviewing the staff report, I would also invite each of you to always go by and actually look at the property. Boots on the ground really does help your consideration. I know many of you have at both the Planning and Zoning Commission level as well as the city council level, and that includes even talking with individuals. So, if an individual approaches you about it, you are welcome to talk with them as long as you are also not, a couple of things. You're not going to announce any position that you are taking with regard to it. I would sit there and nod my head in agreement and take in whatever information you can, and then make sure that you are announcing that, hey, while I was out at the property, I had the opportunity to talk with one of the neighbors, and they informed me of this, coming from the neighbor. You're disclosing that during the course of the meeting. Okay? So, I caution you on providing any position during the course of any discussion with residents prior to the public hearing, but you can, in fact, have those conversations, and I don't want to dissuade you from visiting the property on the notion of, I don't want to, I want to avoid contact with any of the neighbors. That being said, next item I've got is rezoning. Now, when you're talking in terms of rezoning, you're going to be looking for the highest and best use of the property, and I've broken this down from the fifth edition of the Dictionary for Real Estate Appraisal, which is an enthralling tome, if anyone is interested in working their way through it. I can boil it down to reasonably probable and legal use. It doesn't matter if it's vacant or improved property. It's what is physically possible at that location and what is appropriately supported by your city infrastructure. It's what would be financially feasible here. A Trump Tower, though we would like to have implying the highest value. That is your highest and best use that you're going to be looking at for purposes of rezoning. It's regularly utilized during the course of discussions with regard to planning and zoning. You're looking for this. You're not looking for this. You're looking for this. You're not looking for this. And I apologize, over the weekend while I was working on this PowerPoint presentation, my oldest daughter and I were watching a sci-fi thriller on the television, so it incorporated some of that as well. So, you will see the similar slide to this on a number of occasions. This is going to be what I will look at when I dive into my staff reports. Now, I will read them front to back, but I particularly focus on these areas as part of my analysis. The first one is going to be, what is the requested action? The next one is going to be, okay, orient myself to the city and where am I as far as what I'm dealing with here? What are the major roads? What are the arterials? What are the intersections? What are the local businesses that I need to be worried about? The next one I'll look at with regard to rezonings are the use tables, and I'll dive into that a little bit more, or what are all the potential uses? And then I look at the findings of fact, and I will spend a lot of time looking at findings of fact. In fact, on these, you're going to find 11 different points that you'll work through, and is there some degree of evidence to support all 11 of those items? From the council perspective, then, I will also look at what came out of the Planning and Zoning Commission. So, what was the final vote? Were there any conditions that were applied to that vote? Was there a recommendation? What was the vote? Was it eight to zero? Was it four to six? What was the analysis for it? Not four to six, was it six to four? And then I would always tell you that you need to trust the code, because if you're looking through, or trust the staff. Staff and the code will be there to help you with your decision-making process. If you are looking at the factors that are outlined for rezoning, it should be relatively, maybe not an easy decision, but it should be relatively easy to identify, these are the things I need to be looking at in making my decision. So, first subsection that we're going to have here for rezoning, I took this from, Mr. Catterett was wonderful in providing me a couple of samples of this. This is the North Cass Plaza rezoning, and you can see right on the first page exactly what it is that they are requesting to do. Very simply, they are looking to rezone this 34.5 acres to a, from an agricultural district to a BP district, so it's right on the front page as to what they're hopeful of being able to do. Next item you're going to have is, I orient myself to where it is in the location. This can be done both with the aerial photograph as well as, Mr. Catterett will generally provide a map showing what the zoning is in the area currently, or he'll show a little bit more of a, oh, general uses around the area as well, or the part of the GMP as well. There's a map that would be produced as part of that. I've found all of these to be very helpful for orientation purposes, but something for you all to consider. Aerial map. The next thing I look at is going to be this key, and this will always be included in Mr. Catterett's staff reports for any rezoning. And what's important to understand is, it's not necessarily a question of what is being asked to rezone and what we've heard is going to go in there, and what the potential is for that particular property. The real issue you need to look at is, what is all of the potential that could go in there? So, in this particular case, you could potentially have a kennel. It'd be a special use or a conditional use permit, but there are a number of items that would be allowed there regardless of whether or not you heard it was going to be a pet shop versus is it going to be a large box store. I work my way down through this and identify if it's just a straight rezoning, what is it that we're going to be looking at here, and what are the broadest potential for it? You need to understand that just because they present one thing doesn't mean it can't change as long as it's still allowed under that original zoning designation. Okay? Any questions about that? Okay. Rezoning, the findings of fact, and I'm going to zip through these, and I've got, I'm not going to go into great detail under my notion of brevity here. There are 11 findings of fact that are required for a rezoning. This will give you broad ability to ask questions of both the applicant as well as the staff. There will be items during the course of a public hearing that would be helpful coming from members of the community. All of them would be able to be applied within these 11 categories for it. So, the physical characteristic of the area, you're going to go back to, hey, did I go out and look, put boots on the ground and actually walked around the property and see? The character of the surrounding neighborhood. I know we've had a number of individuals who have said, I've lived within the city of Raymore for this many years, and I grew up on those streets, and so I know what that topography is looking like, and I know that tree line that runs down through that creek. If you let it, the code will lead you through your decision-making process, and this is where it does so. These findings of fact are some of the most important areas for you to focus your attention on from the Planning and Zoning Commission. City council, I believe they have them as an option. They are provided to them as part of the final determination. Is that part of the packet? So, they're still included within it. You're getting a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission at the city council level. Those findings of fact are still outlined within it, and if you're going to have a public hearing, I'd be looking for things that fit in with those 11 findings of fact. Okay? I would also note for you that if you get to the conclusion of the public hearing and you're still looking for additional information, you all can continue to elicit that information both from staff as well as from the code provisions. We are happy to provide those answers to you. And if it's not included within this portion of it, Mr. Catterett will generally have already covered during the course of his verbal staff report as well. Okay? So, at the conclusion of that, you're also going to have what the council consideration. Now, from a council member's perspective, you're going to get to see the Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation, and again, I pointed out that you're looking at what the vote is. Hey, was it a vote to accept it? Was it a full vote of eight of the individuals? Was there a recommendation that had a condition applied to it? Those are all items that you would want to focus on as you're reviewing your staff information for the city council level consideration. I would note on here, and I've got it in there in italics at the top, you can be considered somewhat of a collaborative effort, so if there is information that was at the Planning and Zoning Commission level that you did not see enough detail on, you can absolutely ask on that in order to elicit a greater detail. At the city council level, you will have a broader discretion in order to be able to ask questions than you generally would at the Planning and Zoning Commission level. Planning and Zoning Commission level, it's going to be, does it apply with the code, and what information are we taking? Now, do I want you to wander too far from that? No, I really don't. Your findings of fact are outlined here for what a rezoning should be, but you all, as a city council level, can take in a little bit broader perspective with regard to your decision-making. Does that make sense? Any questions about that so far? Okay. Moving on, and again, you're going to see very similar situations. Next one we've got is conditional use permits. Conditional use permits are outlined in code sections 470.030A, and they are really issues where you would, they would be allowed under the current code and zoning section. However, because of their particular usage, it might impose a greater impact on surrounding neighbors, and because of that, we want them to obtain a conditional use. I'll give a couple of examples, and the one we go from here is the public building at Rec Park, and you'll see that pop up shortly, but also consider kennels, payday loan provisions, and mechanics or auto repair shops. All of those are conditional use permits that would be applied for it. Yes, excepted under the provisions of our zoning code, but we also want to make sure that they're not directly dramatically negatively impacting some of the surrounding neighbors. And again, you'll have a little bit broader discretion with regard to these. Next slide, of course, you've seen this before on our previous one. Look first and foremost at the requested action. Look for your aerial photographs for orientation, and akin with regard to conditional use permits, there will be 11 points for findings of fact, and I would tell you, those 11 points are broad enough that if you can't ask questions associated with it and fill in some of those blanks, then we, as a staff, need to be doing a better job for you, and I will take the entire blame for that particular one. Again, with regard to the recommendation, council will be looking at planning and zoning recommendation. Again, there is nothing to say that the staff report is not important in its entirety. What I would tell you is, if you're looking at this from a primer perspective, Mr. Catterett will cover a lot of the other stuff in his staff report during the verbal portion of the presentation. Okay? Conditional use permit. With regard to this, it's important to know who's going to be impacted and how they will be impacted, or how much they will be impacted. So, when you're going through your analysis, you're looking first and foremost to your requested action, and then it's very important for you to have your aerial photos and other items from the staff report to look at, so you see who your neighboring property owners are and what their current uses are as well. This will tell you what the impact of that conditional use permit is going to be. Kennel next door to a daycare or something along those lines might not necessarily be ideal for you, both of which I believe would require a conditional use permit. There you go. With regard to your conditional use permit, there are 11 factors. Again, the code will lead you, if you let it. The code will give you the direction that you need. I've listed out the 11 factors on this page and the next page, and I can go into some detail with you if you're interested in that, though in order to be brief this evening, I will simply leave them up there and provide you with the documentation. There are conditions that can be applied to the conditional use permit. Your conditions can be a little bit broader with regard to those conditions. Now, you can't go in and say, well, you're going to be a restaurant, but you're only going to be allowed to be open from 11:00 a.m. until 7:00 p.m. at night, when all of the other restaurants in town are open from 8:00 a.m. until 9:00 p.m. at night. Those are not going to be acceptable conditions, but with regard to a conditional use permit, you do have a little bit broader discretion with what you can apply. If you've got questions about is it an acceptable condition or not, staff is more than happy to provide you with input on that. A lot of times, it's going to boil down to whether or not the applicant has any concerns with regard to that particular condition as well. Here's the next portion of it. That's the remaining 11. Beyond this, again, the staff will fill in the rest of the staff report material for you if you're in need of that information. Okay. Again, my effort at brevity here. When you get to the planning and zoning, or the city council level, Planning and Zoning will have considered your, or the application for the conditional use permit, and in this particular case, I would like to point out that the Planning and Zoning Commission had a recommendation, but they also applied additional conditions to it. In this case, the site plan application shall be consistent with the conceptual site plan and building elevation submitted as part of the conditional use permit application. Minor modifications are permitted as final design is complete. City council would, of course, see this as an additional condition. If city council had additional conditions they wanted to apply, they could so do so at its level. Do we have a question?
No.
Okay. Very good. Preliminary plats. This is a preliminary plat of Philadelphia, one of the first plats that the United States saw. So, it goes way back. I'm not going to pick out particular streets there for you, but I wanted to make sure and point out, we've been doing preliminary plats and plats for a long time here in the United States. In the preliminary plat level, important for you to point out that basically, all of the cities and counties in Missouri have adopted a procedure for approval of preliminary plats and final plats. The preliminary plats give the developer the opportunity to come in and set the stage for, this is what I'm planning on doing, and this is how I'm going to do it, before they jump into the installation of all the public improvements. Preliminary plat, you all will have a broad discretion and deep analysis on. You're going to go into stream area, you're going to go into floodplain area. That is the area where you really get to the meat and potatoes. Once you get to the final plat level, the final plat level is going to have a substantial consideration, and it's going to simply be, is it substantially compliant with the terms of the original preliminary plat? Does it meet with the provisions that were, or the conditions that were attached to the preliminary plat for our purposes? So, the final plat level, really at that point, the cat's kind of out of the bag, and all we're doing is checking to make sure, we're checking off all of the requirements and conditions that were imposed on, imposed upon the original preliminary plat, and is it substantially compliant with the preliminary plat? Okay? Preliminary plats are not recorded, but they are very important, and when it comes to this, one of the items that I've added to this screen, or this particular screenshot, is what are my options? Because you, as a Planning and Zoning Commission and you, as a city council, have different options. And this is another one that I would invite you all to ask both staff, whether that be Mr. Catterett or myself. Under the preliminary plat, you're going to have three options that I would identify for you, and we'll talk about those a little bit further down. But what are my options is the critical points will give you ample area for diving into the meat and potatoes of what is being presented to you. So, again, in this particular case, what you're looking for is, here's our preliminary plat, and we're requesting the approval of our preliminary plat, and here's our aerial photographs that orient us to it and where we have, and if I'm going to put boots on the ground, I'm going to make sure and drive a little bit around this area to see what my neighboring property owners are putting up with, or what my neighboring topography is going to be. With regard to the preliminary plat, this is my pain for, my area for, what are my options? And under the preliminary plat, if the preliminary plat does comply with all the requirements, and I note in here the language, the Planning and Zoning Commission will forward the application to the city council with a recommendation of approval. So, it becomes a, if it meets all of those standard requirements that are outlined, then you're going to be forwarding along. The next option you've got there is, hey, if it's generally in compliance but not fully in compliance, then you can recommend conditional acceptance of that preliminary plat from the Planning and Zoning Commission, and forward it to the city council with those recommendations subject to those particular conditions. If the city council approves it with those conditions, then those conditions have to be met before the final plat comes back through for your consideration. If the preliminary plat is not in compliance with any of the, or with all of the requirements, the Planning and Zoning Commission will recommend disapproval of the preliminary plat, and that disapproval has to be made within 10 days of its consideration. Notify the subdivider in writing the reasons for the recommendation for disapproval, and Mr. Catterett will generally handle that process for you all, once the vote has occurred. I do like it on here, and I want to point out, Chairman Faulkner, that just because there is a dartboard on the side that says, leave it to the lawyers, that does not invite you to invite, to have me place my particular vote on a matter. Okay. Findings of fact for the preliminary plat. Again, there are only four subsections for this, however, you'll note that all of them are very, very broad and will give you ample opportunity to dive into it. So, for example, your D for the preliminary plat will make adequate provision to accommodate resulting additional demands. That opens the door for traffic, engineering, infrastructure, emergency services, floodplain, street impacts, tree preservation plans, tree preservation plans, parking, access and transportation plans. You've got open space planning, you can talk lot dimensions, and you can discuss pedestrian access for it as well. So, that's, when you see a D on there with language like that, it opens a wide door for you all to ask questions of both the applicant as well as staff when it comes to these preliminary plats. And again, this is where the rubber meets the road for your development. If you've waited to ask your question by the time you get to the final plat level, you're going to have disappointment in my position, because all the final plat has to do is be substantially compliant with your preliminary plat. Fair statement? Any other issues you got on that one? Yeah, I should have invited Mr. Catterett to chime in at any given point. I've been doing all the speaking so far, and I'm doing so in order to try and maintain my timeline here, but, yes, sir.
If the Planning and Zoning Commission determines that they don't feel that something meets the conditions, and you're saying that the staff that just provided the information saying they were in compliance with all the conditions is going to be the same staff that writes the letter that says they're not, that they're not in compliance according to the commission? Is that...
Sure.
Would that be a difficult task for staff?
It will not, but what I would suggest to you, from the commission level and the council level, commission level basically at that point is, and I think we have done pretty good about our planning commission and teaching the process for this. If you're not going to vote to approve a preliminary plat, and it looks like it's going to be a recommendation for denial of it, well, actually, we wouldn't do it that way anyway. It would be a recommendation for approval, but it would be a vote that would indicate denial. We will give an opportunity for individuals to indicate why they voted on that particular matter. That would then be helpful for Mr. Catterett to incorporate in that letter. I'll let you chime in. Any other input? And a lot of times, we're going to get that information from how the hearing has gone at the end of the day. If we have issue, we will ask for additional clarification. I would anticipate that if only the testimony came forward, not a single Planning and Zoning Commissioner asked a single question, and the vote was to reject it, we would have substantial follow-up with you all before we concluded that particular matter to find out, okay, look, we need additional, is there findings of fact here that we're not satisfied if there is anything in particular you want us to focus on? Okay. Fair statement? I don't think we've ever had to do that. Have we, do you recall a time?
Well, yes, there was one time where that did occur. It's years ago, but it did occur.
And did you go back at that particular point in order to inquire as to the basis for the denial, or was it that simply the findings of fact and conclusions were not met, and therefore it was denied?
That's, that's correct. The findings were met. Application was ultimately denied by council. We notified the, you know, the applicant of the reasons for denial.
Sure.
Yep.
Does that answer your question? Thank you, sir. Okay, moving forward, the preliminary plat, this, of course, will be the only, one of the considerations for the city council. Planning and Zoning Commission will have already done their work, and this is what we will have boiled the entire work of the Planning and Zoning Commission down to, is what's on the screen for this application. You'll note the seven conditions to the side. So, this particular preliminary plat carried with it a substantial number of conditions that were applied for the consideration of the city council, and if the council adopted those seven conditions, they would have to be met and satisfied before final approval of the final, before approval of the final plat. Okay? And again, I've got identified here, highlighted the vote and the recommendation for approval subject to the following conditions. Look for those at the city council level. Okay? Next I've got? Yes?
You've been talking about all this, but I want to know where the planning comes in on that. For instance, this could be an R1, but they might want to have an R1 and such a thing that it's in an area where we want it to be an R1, but we want it to be a different type of R1. And yet, we don't seem to have any ability to tell the developer, we like the idea of an R1 for whatever it is, but we don't want that particular type of R1, we want the other. Where does the planning come in in all of this zoning? I haven't heard any word about planning in what you want to make decisions. You've done it all just by road, but then the town doesn't grow by road. It grows by the way people feel and what they want to do. It grows by the way that people feel and what they want to do. So what, how do you handle the planning on all this?
I will try to answer that by referring back. In, in almost all of these cases, some of those requirements or the conditions for approval, findings of fact will make reference with regard to compliance with your growth management plan. And that's going to be one of those critical factors that gets determined. Does it comply with the growth management plan? We go through the growth management plan on an annual basis at the Planning and Zoning Commission and on an annual basis, we make sure to go back in and see is this growth is the growth that we are anticipating following that. When you are talking about purely rezoning though, if it says it's allowed under the R1 zoning, that's what's going to be allowed under the R1 zoning. You will have some control over that when it comes for the preliminary plat, but it's not going to be controlling what kind of use it's going to be. At that point, the rezoning, anything that's allowed under that rezoning would be allowed. Jim, any input?
Yeah, you're right. Again, you understand this. It all starts with the growth management plan and so we have to as a, as a community make sure that the future land use plan that we have is what we want to occur in our community. For all that undeveloped land that we have and half of our city is undeveloped, we need to make sure that the plan accurately shows how we want that land to develop. And then as that property owner moves forward to develop the property, that's when we can break it out into the specific zoning districts that you, that you're referencing. So it is kind of a progress of steps to go from just an undeveloped, coastal piece of property to get the development that we want. It all starts with that, with that future land use map and our, in our growth management plan. That's the key component of this, to get what, what we want as a community for a piece of property.
Now, the council and the, the city is not bound by the growth management plan, but it is a guidebook for what we would like it to look like. From a, from a legal standpoint, it doesn't hold the same bearing as a final plat would for this is what's allowed, but the growth management plan gives you the direction for what you're going to be able to see there. And if an applicant comes in with an application that doesn't comply with that, it's absolutely going to be referenced in Mr. Catterett's staff report. In fact, I think every time you make a specific reference to what the growth management plan says with a particular property. Okay? So that is, that's where it would occur at. Now, you can add additional conditions and we'll talk about that as we go down further into the material and we're almost there, I promise.
Well, I was thinking in terms of apartments. Apartments, for instance, can be laid flat or they can go up, but we saw some that we would like to see go up, but I haven't seen that in the growth management plan or I haven't seen that in anybody that has discussed it.
And it won't, that won't be the growth. The growth management plan will lay out that we want particular land area to be apartments, but it won't designate the type of apartments that they need to be, one, two, or four-story. Our code allows the multiple stories. We don't, we don't require them to be multiple stories, so we leave some flexibility back to the property owner with, how they want to develop their land. We, we allow the apartments and we allow three, four, five-story buildings, but it's really up to them to come forward with the plan of how they want to develop their property. We don't, we don't specifically tell them, you have to do a four-story building in this area.
From, I guess you could look at it from an economic development standpoint as well too, and that would be a challenge for our Economic Development Director for, we are looking for this type of business to come in or we are looking to find this type of a housing option for it. But that's going to be up for economic development. By the time it comes to the Community Development Department's office, the developer has in his head what the rezoning is going to be and potentially already a site plan or a potential plat for that property.
And usually, you know, to get the density that the developers need on particular properties, especially apartment zone property, they do have to go, go up, but our code allows them to do that very specifically, so.
Any other questions? Moving on, final plat. And again, look for substantial compliance with the preliminary plat and that's going to be the key word for all your final plat analysis. Under this, again, the requested action, I look generally at the aerial photo and the property location for orientation. Under the findings of fact, there are only three points for the findings of fact and that's going to boil down to substantial compliance, have they met all the conditions that were outlined in the preliminary plat and one other that I'm not hitting off the top of my head, but will get to. And of course, the council only, Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation for the final plat. But actually, that's not right because final plat is not public hearing at...
Not public.
Not public hearing. That's right. Okay. Okay, so the proposal in this for your staff report, you'll see the applicant seeks to obtain a final plat approval. In this case, it was Westbrook at Creekmore 11th plat, lots 311 through 333 and tracks FF. Coming up for your consideration of when that's outlined, I believe on the first page of your staff report that you'll find that one. Also showing the aerial photographs so that you can become oriented as to the location for it and if you're going to put boots on the ground, who you need to talk to on, or who you, where you need to go in order to do so. Final plat. With regard to the final plat, again, three conditions associated with this is substantially the same as the approved preliminary plat. Does it comply with all the conditions, restrictions, and requirements of the code and all other applicable ordinances and design standards? And does it comply with any conditions that were attached by the, under the terms and the approval of the preliminary plat? I've forgotten that second one. And again, you're going to have a commission recommendation here. The vote for the commission in this particular case was an eight to zero vote with a recommendation for approval. And again, they applied four different conditions in this particular case and you can see some of those applicable conditions. Hours of op, hours of operation wouldn't be an appropriate one for a final plat, but you're talking about floodplain requirements and compliance with that. And again, look to the vote, look to the recommendation and note any conditions that have been applied. Okay. Shifting gears slightly to the public hearing and standards of review. Public hearings will be applied for all except for the final plat and the final plat will get a recommendation at this, at the Planning and Zoning Commission and then a determination at the City Council level. Most of those I think are showing up on consent agenda at this point.
Final plat or consent at Planning Commission, but not at council.
There you go. Thank you. So, your standards of review. If challenged, this is what we are going to have to support when it comes time for each one of these particular items. Under your rezoning application, you're going to be looking for, is it arbitrary and unreasonable? It's going to be tend, be dependent upon the evidence and the facts and the circumstances of each particular case. And unless it appears that determination by the body is arbitrary and unreasonable, the court cannot substitute an opinion for the council's determination. So the council is going to be given a broad discretion with regard to the, its final decision as a legislative body. It will be based upon whether or not the council's action is fairly debatable. If there's any matter in there that makes it fairly debatable, the court cannot substitute its own personal opinion. And the burden of proof for this is going to be on the original individual applicant. So it's not going to be on the city to prove that. We simply have to walk in in order to say, hey, it's not unreasonable, it's not arbitrary, we made our decision based upon the facts presented. And I would tell you that a lot of the time, you're going to find a staff report that will add ample information to it with regard to the basis for that review and approval. So if you adopt those findings of fact, you're going to generally have the additional information for it. And again, I've got a notation here that we as staff and my particular position, happy to provide an opinion, will not tell you what our vote would be and we will only refer you continually back to the factors for findings of fact. Standards of review with regard to conditional use permits. Again, is it supported by competent and substantial evidence upon the record? In determining whether the administrative action is supported by substantial incompetent evidence upon the whole record, an appellate court may consider only the record that was before the administrative body. So they're not going to look for outside stuff on this. They're going to rely upon what the record that was made at the Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council level for both of your public hearings. Final plats and preliminary plats. This is a more recent case that's come out, 2006, that had some good information in it. I'm happy to provide it to any of you in the room who are interested in it. Enthralling reading, very much like the appraiser's tome on dictionary. Forelong Companies, Inc. versus City of Kansas City, Missouri, with regard to preliminary and final plats. And here, the Plan Commission, the City Council are acting in administrative capacity and not in a legislative capacity, which changes the standard of review. Basically, if they have in fact complied with all of the requirements, it becomes a ministerial review and the council would be, have the duty to approve it. They have much less discretion to deny it. So on your preliminary plat and your final plat, you're going to have less discretion, especially on your final plat analysis. That's what this particular case was focused on. Generally, they're going to challenge you at that level for the final plat. And I'm looking at my watch, I'm 30 minutes, I know. Oh, are we? Okay, very good. Unacceptable factors to consider. So, this comes from a Mike White article and, and book that we have maintained for appropriate land development with cities. Rezonings have certain unacceptable factors to consider and I've listed out a number of them here based upon case law. If you all are interested, I'm happy to provide the case law to support the same. Previous refusal to rezonate properties, not an acceptable reason not to rezonate again in the future. Prevention or regulating competition with existing businesses. Hey, we have our friendly little coffee house in town and we sure don't want to see Starbucks put it out of business. We don't regulate for that for purposes of zoning. That the proposed development will generate traffic is not by itself a basis for denial of a rezoning. Can be a, I guess, not really a critical factor, but if you're looking at the, whether or not the area is developing appropriately, traffic may play a role, but that's generally going to come when it comes time for a preliminary plat application. And again, the code will guide you on these items. That the proposed development will generate stormwater issues. Again, that's going to be a preliminary plat or a site plan analysis for you at the end of the day. Plan on seeing that. Now, we had one just recently come through that was a little backwards on us where we had a final plat and this was the subdivision just recently, first reading I believe at City Council most recently. We've not had the second reading yet. But on that particular case, it was a little bit backwards. We had a final plat already in place and they were coming back in with a rezoning application. So you weren't going to get that second analysis. And that, that caused our planning commission, I was very proud of how they handled it because there were additional questions that went into the rezoning application. If we'd have pushed too much farther, we'd have pushed into an area where the rezoning wouldn't have been acceptable, but I figured in that particular case where we're not going to get the opportunity to look at that final plat, it becomes a little bit more of a justification for why we're digging. What the similar zoning is nearby is not a, or that there is a rezoning recently nearby does not necessarily give you a justification for denying a rezoning in this particular case. The desire of the neighboring property owners for the land to remain vacant. That one is one that I have seen on a regular basis. In fact, one of the first land use cases I ever worked on was a storage facility and we had a apartment complex on one side and in the grocery store on the other side. Well, they'd worn a path across the property for access to the grocery store, the straight-line path from the apartment complex the other. And many of the neighbors came back in in opposition to that mostly because they were going to have to now go down and around the block and utilize the sidewalk as opposed to just cutting straight across the property. So just because they have a desire to remain vacant on the property is not necessarily one of your justifications or is not a justification for not rezoning. That there is no immediate plan, and I think we've seen this come forward as recently too. Just because you don't have an immediate plan following up with a rezoning, isn't necessarily a justification to deny the rezoning. Remember, what you're doing is making a determination of, is the zoning at this location going to be the highest and best use of the property? So a lot of times you're going to see, and this is generalization and Jim will shoot me down for it I'm sure later, but the generalization of, hey, we've got a main drag and an arterial street and right up front, we've got commercial business and behind that, we've got office space and we're going to buffer that office space with small multifamily or townhouse and behind that, we're going to go single-family larger lots. You know, that's, you know, the kind of the transitioning that you see from this, but that's kind of the analysis that you're going to have on a highest and best use for rezoning application. And again, going back to the growth management plan is one of the critical items that you can look at for purposes of, is this truly going to be the highest and best use? Your growth management plan has identified the areas in the city that we believe the highest and best use will be utilized by whatever is indicated there. Okay? Any questions about that? Moving on? Oh, shoot. I should have clicked forward. Why didn't you guys stop me? See what's what I get for having it in my back. Conditional use permits. Conditional use permits can have conditions applied to them. Those conditions can be pretty broad, but they can't be used in an unreasonable manner and they can't be used in a discriminatory manner. Examples that I've got on here for good conditions include specific time periods. Hey, we want you to come back in and, and renew your conditional use permit after two years. Do we, I don't know if we've got a general timeframe that we've, I think I've seen five on a regular basis. Also, it's, you can have the requirement that it be non-transferable. So if your conditional use for the operation of a kennel was for this individual, just because he's going to sell that property for the operation of a new conditional, you don't have that transferability of the conditional use permit. The new owner would have to come back in in order to have, get approval for that new kennel. Examples of bad conditions, and these were taken straight from case law for you and again, happy to provide that case law if you're interested. The hours of operation where a drive-in restaurant was being placed at different hours for other restaurants in town was struck down. Dedication of right-of-way and construction of streets, that was struck down as an exaction. Again, that goes back to, hey, you're going to build this street that goes out from our property X number of miles in order to be able to build or have your conditional use permit. And then finally, denial of equal protection where a special use permit for one owner that are not required for others. And I don't think we would have seen any of these come through, but there's case law out there which indicates, hey, look, you, you granted the conditional use permit for a kennel here or for a mechanic shop here. There's a mechanic shop right across the other side of the street and, but for any other factor, you've denied him that particular conditional use permit. Make sense? Okay. Next one, unacceptable factors and consider, to consider for preliminary and final plats. And these I would note for you will generally relate to compliance with the code. And again, staff will provide you assistance with this. We will provide you guidance with regard to the staff report and the code. So again, I've got your example here for, no site grading shall commence until a copy is recorded easement from the property owner to the north is submitted regarding installation of off-site stormwater infrastructure. That's a pretty specific condition that's been applied there. But it's not going to generally be a condition for, you're going to build 750 yards worth of additional road frontage going on to this, or you're going to apply the following expansion of whatever roads. Jim, any input on that one? Okay. And...
Mr. Zer.
Yes, sir.
So I do have a question on that one. I don't know if I'm reading it backwards or not. So I assumed that the example there was an unacceptable example, but I'm not sure from the way you're saying it, I, I guess I don't really understand what's unacceptable about no site grading.
I, I'm sorry. This one is an example actually of, so no site grade, this was taken straight from one of the conditions that was actually approved. So this is an example, I'm sorry, should have been an example of a good factor for you. It was not a bad factor. They just had to comply with that before the final approval of the final plat.
Yep, I'm good then.
That's what I, that's what I get for transferring over the title to each one of my slides as I move on to the next one. I should have put acceptable factor to consider for preliminary final plat. And then my last item I have for you is any questions that you might have for me. I am happy to answer them and Mr. Catterett, I'm sure would be happy to chime in as well. But, that's not bad. Anyone have anything? Again, I understand a lot of it's going to be rerun for a lot of you, but I'm happy to be able to provide the presentation.
Go ahead.
I have a question. Several times that we've come in with preliminary plats and, and we start having a discussion of areas outside the preliminary plat and we keep getting, I guess, off-track except for, I'm, I'm looking at the city as a whole and I have somebody that keeps telling me, no, we're only deciding on this piece of land. And my theory is, whatever happens on that piece of land has an effect on other lands around it. So should not we consider everything around when we're looking at rezoning or, you know, a plat or something like that?
If you're going to suggest that we are going to control this particular property based upon the entirety of Raymore, I'm probably not going to say yes to that one, especially from a Planning and Zoning Commission level. Planning and Zoning Commission level, your goal on many of these are going to be, how is this particular development going to impact upon the surrounding neighbors and is this a highest and best use for the property? Again, your growth management plan will control a lot of that for you and if it's in compliance with the growth management plan, then I would stick to a, what's the negative impact that we're going to see? That's on a rezoning level. If you're talking about a preliminary plat level, that's going to be your discussion of, is it going to cause stormwater issues for neighboring property owners? Is it going to have a substantial runoff issue? Are we going to have substantial issues with regard to traffic and what are our traffic controls going to be at that particular location? Jim, any input?
Part of the time when the commission might get into trouble is, is what application is before you and what you're trying to consider. For example, if it's a rezoning application, that's not the appropriate time to deal with a stormwater runoff issue or necessarily a traffic issue. That's more, the next step would be the preliminary plat. It's just, it's sometimes I think we get ahead or fall behind where we want, what application stage we're at and I think, I believe that might be where you're referring to, that you're trying to get too specific on what application you say, that's really a preliminary plat or final plat item or, or what have you, or they, they don't have to do that study yet, but they have to do it at their next step.
If you're trying to control it from a full city standpoint though, that's where it's going to be critical and that's why I think we spend a lot of time every year on our growth management plan to make sure and review. Does this still match with what we hope the growth of our city will look like? Old Town or Original Town would have been another sample of that one where we had the Original Town analysis not too many years ago. Anyone else? If there is none, Mr. Zer, thank you. Very informative. I appreciate it.
I'm glad you gave us a handout so we can kind of look back over, and...
Findings of fact are critical.
They are. They certainly are, as is the staff report. All right. Well, if there's nothing else, is there any other business that come before us tonight? Any other business at this time that anybody'd like to bring up? If not, we do have a reason to move into executive session.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we enter into executive session to discuss personnel matters is authorized by RSMO 610.021, subsection 3.
Second.
Much better made in second to move into executive session. Please have a roll called.
Yes, Councilmember Hubach, Councilmember Seemers.
Yes.